Welcome everyone to the Holyoke School Committee Regular Meeting. It is June twenty-three and calling this meeting to order at six oh one. Roll call please.
Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Here.
Mr. Sheehan. Ms. LaFave.
Present.
Ms. LeBron Martinez.
Here.
Ms. Tensley Williams.
Aki.
Mr. Rizaza.
Here.
Mr. Welbourn.
Here.
Mr. Collmore.
Here.
And Ms. Wilson.
Present.
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On March twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-five, Governor Maura Healey signed into law bodies age sixty-two as amended by section twenty-five zero-six, entitled an act relative to extending certain COVID-nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency. Of interest to all governmental public bodies in Massachusetts, the act extends until June twenty-twenty-seven, the authority for meetings of multiple member bodies to be held in an entirely remote or hybrid format. All public bodies may hold fully remote or hybrid meetings without the physical presence of a quorum of the public body, as long as adequate alternative means of public access is also provided. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-eight, Section Twenty, I'm hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting and the meeting is being livestreamed and run live on the Cities Community TV channel. Welcome everybody. And first, I would like to acknowledge the awesome crowd that we have here today and I'll highlight a few of you. Thank you so much for being here. Senator Vilas. Mr. Mike Moriarty. And I believe joining us remotely via Zoom is Representative Pat Duffy.
Madam Vice Chair.
Mr. Mayor.
Can I make a motion to suspend the rules and go to Agenda Item Five-A, exit determination on the Hoyoke Public Schools chronically underperforming status, update from the interim Commissioner, Secretary Tutwiler.
May I have a second? There were many seconds. Who was the official second? Mr. Rizaza on the second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Commissioner Tutwiler, please come up. And I would also like to acknowledge Mr. Moriarty to come right up as well.
Evening.
Good evening.
A little warm. Outside. Not in here. Uh, and any weather, uh, scenario, uh, is fine for the news that I, I, I bring this evening. So, uh, as we all know, a little more than ten years ago, the Massachusetts Board of Elementary and Secondary Ed made a difficult decision to designate the Hoyoke Public Schools chronically underperforming and put the district into receivership. It was only the second district to enter receivership. Today, I am extremely pleased to announce that on Tuesday, July first, Hoyoke Public Schools will be the first district to exit receivership. That determination is, uh, under my purview as Commissioner and it comes after notable gains in graduation rates, uh, a reduced number of suspensions, expanding pre-K offerings and dual-language programming in the district, uh, and the redesign of Hoyoke High School. Also, the notable and essential work of this body, this school committee, has put in place to improve their governance. That and so much more. I want to honor that this is an emotional and deeply earned moment for the entire Hoyoke community. For the past ten years, Hoyoke families, educators, school staff, partners, and leaders have undertaken the arduous work of transforming your school system. This work has made a difference for your children throughout the district and it was motivated by your vision that all Hoyoke children should experience the same excellent educational opportunities. I'd like to commend this body, uh, the school committee, for your thorough implementation of your capacity-building plan. You've done this work with admirable balance of advocacy and teamwork with the department. The partnership that has emerged between the Hoyoke School Committee and the department is a unique collaboration that will change on July first. But on behalf of the entire department and the Executive Office of Education, I want you to know that we're committed to helping Hoyoke Public Schools sustain its positive trajectory as the first district to e-exit receivership. I'd also like to take this moment to praise receiver Anthony Soto and his team for the steadfast leadership that has always kept the focus on students. As we often hear you say, students are at the center of everything you do in the Hoyoke Public Schools. Receiver Soto, from the very beginning of your tenure as the district's leader, you demonstrated how to incorporate community input into the district decision-making and built consensus around shared strategic, uh, priorities. Both Receiver Soto, uh, and the Hoyoke, uh, Hoyoke's first receiver, Dr. Stevens Reich, brought s-highly skillful, steady, and deeply committed leadership to the district. Together, Hoyoke Public Schools' leadership, including the school committee and your engaged stakeholders are demonstrating how strong collaboration can fortify a district's transition out of, uh, receivership. I hope that you seize the opportunity ahead of you uh, to leverage your strong systems, collaborative spirit, and community engagement to make the gains in student learning that your students and families expect to see. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education remains invested in your success and we will continue to support your work to create excellent outcomes for all Hoyoke children. Congratulations. And at this time, I will, uh, first acknowledge, um, Rep. Duffy and Senator Vilas, uh, uh, my pa- our partners in the legislature uh, and turn it over to, uh, my board colleague, Mike Moriarty.
Thank you very much, Secretary and, uh, interim Commissioner. I think you're in your last six days. Uh, so.
No one's counting, but it is six.
Enjoy every minute of it. So I, I spent a good ten years, uh, thirteen years in this room, uh, with, with many of you. Uh, I first got to know this gentleman next to the superintendent in these very rooms, sitting right next to him as you do now, Anthony, and, uh, uh, you know, I've been at a front-row seat through this whole process. Uh, you know, I've been, uh, not very publicly facing about the receivership in Hoyoke because this is not a board that's representational by geography. It is a policy board that addresses the issues for the entire state. And so I'm not like the Hoyoke member. I never positioned myself in that way, but I was sure paying a lot of close attention, first through Steve's Reich and, uh, now with Anthony Soto. They've been, they've indulged me with, uh, you know, an hour or more of their time every month to keep me informed with everything that's going on. Uh, instead of abandoning a school committee, it was engaged through this entire process, uh, although disempowered. Uh, I think that was a very wise choice and, um, you know, there's been a lot of process that has taken place. Um, I want to talk a little bit about the exit assurances because I've heard a lot of criticism outside of here. Um, you know, I've heard a lot of questioning, why would that be? It really is part of the culmination of what has been done here. An intentional, careful, and student-facing process. And I think that's exactly what we should expect from our State Department of Education, uh, when they handle anything like this, especially because, as you know, there are no rules to end a, a receivership. This had to be innovative by its very nature. It was sought from this community and it was responded to. And I think it was responded to in a way where you have the continuity now of an experienced school leader to take you in. You have the best-trained school committee in all of Massachusetts by quite a bit. Um, and I've been watching as a very deliberative process as you go through all of the policies is taking place. Very few school districts go through that level of housekeeping. So that really has you set out with the wind at your back. So why have assurances at all? I think there are a couple of reasons for this. Number one is that some of it is about making sure some unfinished pieces are completed. I'm going to speak about one of those in particular in just a moment. Another is to just make sure the off-ramp isn't a cliff. And I think that's always a good organizational pl- mindset to engage. The one I'm most interested in, in the area that as will surprise no one here, I think is most important, is that there's going to be a literacy plan developed in this district. I am a huge fan of literacy plans if and only if they're done right. That they're done with a lot of community involvement, that they're done following the best evidence-based information that is available. And then that they don't just turn into some compliance document that gets placed in a drawer, but rather is a living document that is being referred to by the leadership of every school and by the people actually doing the instruction, our teachers and our educator workforce. Um, it's had very, very good effect in places all across the country. I've seen it firsthand. I've, uh, had an opportunity to meet with people who have crafted them. You have many assets in place to develop an excellent literacy plan and to execute it excellently. And it's sorely needed. Because I was in that room at the War Memorial in twenty-fifteen. I made a case that was different than a lot of my fellow Hoyokers and said, "Do it or don't. Do what works for the kids. Do what changes the trajectory that's been so problematic for so long." And I've always thought that trajectory were the very low literacy outcomes that we've been experiencing across the city. Now, in the course of receivership, two things happened. I pointed this out the last time we were in Hoyoke. One is the Morgan School, in the early years of its receivership, reached a forty-four percent meet and exceeds expectations on third-grade reading. It did not sustain that, but it did it. Also, as school configuration was gradually changing, the Metcalf School, while it was still an elementary school, obtained over fifty percent, which is the only time that that has happened so long as we've been measuring this data in the city of Hoyoke. But it was done. And what does that tell us for all of you as you execute a plan going forward? That it can be done. And it can be done in schools that are discounted as places where kids aren't going to learn. You, like I do, like people who actually live in the city, understand that's never been true and it isn't true now. Kids in Hoyoke can learn. It really is about a solid plan, very well executed. So all of these things are coming into place. The one other thing that I always said throughout the receivership, because I was never advocating for a change in the governmental structure. I was always advocating for resources and changes in outcomes. And so throughout that time, I always said, "You want it into the receivership? Help the receiver succeed. The receiver's success is the best end result." I'm going to be honest with you. I don't believe in terms of, uh, in terms of academic outcomes, that's where we are. And I actually think this city will eventually be an excellent case study for what does and does not work with the most extreme versions of state intervention. Because I think the ball is in the legislature's court at this point. You really have to look at intervention. We have to have intervention. We truly do. But it needs to always be effective and serve the purpose for which it's invoked. Uh, and I don't think we're there yet. However, uh, I think the start that you have on July first and more importantly, the start you have at the beginning of the upcoming school year with the exciting opening of a new PEC school, uh, is all to the good and I think there's a bright future. So, uh, by the way, uh, another thing is, uh, I was appointed in September after the receivership vote had happened and all the pre-planning for that was done. You were allowed two five-year terms in Massachusetts and then your term limited. I'm at my tenth year. So as this process finishes, in this particular hat that I've been wearing, so do I. But be assured, I remain tremendously invested in the successful outcome for the children of the city and wish to be called on at any time that I can be of any help to any of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think. Thank you so much. Mr. Ronfren Martinez.
I just think for our community, whoever's watching, this deserves a round of applause for all of us. Our teachers, our administration, who has worked so hard to make this, um, become a success for all of us. So you all served that.
Yes. Yes. Mr. Collmore.
Yes, thank you very much. First of all, I'd like to thank the acting commissioner for really, really working together and your colleague, Mr. Thompson, working together to make this happen. Because without you people and without us and without all the wonderful children in Hoyoke, this wouldn't have happened. And I want to work together with you and I know you're going to work together with us to make this happen. Speaking of Mr. Moriarty, you know, we go back many, many years. And the best thing that Mike ever did on a school committee is start that reading program. That is one of the wonderful things that has happened in the school system in all my years of working together with many colleagues. It's been wonderful, wonderful, just working with all of you to make sure that the children come first. And as long as the children come first, everything will gel and we'll be back for successful, the best in the state of Massachusetts, the best school system. And we'll be there shortly, as long as we all work together to make this happen.
Thank you. Mayor Garcia.
Thank you, gentlemen, so much. I think that's, for a very long time, uh, all we were, we have been looking and waiting for is to be considered a partner in how we, um, uh, improve outcomes, uh, improve our systems in the district. You know, obviously, receivership is not meant to be a permanent situation. It's a temporary pivot uh, when, uh, circumstances aren't necessarily achieving the outcomes communities are, are expected to achieve. But one, um, one important note in Mr. Moriarty's point about case studies, when we look at the three districts that are in receivership or other districts that are probably on that line, we're talking about communities that have centralized poverty, um, in, in those communities. And, uh, one of the, uh, takeaways now here as mayor in my community, um, and being in the trenches and trying to understand the landscape and how to improve the quality of life, the social determinants of health disparities in our neighborhoods and the municipality's inability. You know, we're kind of like on this overdrive where the engine, the foot is all the way down on the pedal, trying to close those gaps and improve conditions and barely making a dent because there isn't enough resources to keep up with, um, the circumstances that exist in these neighborhoods. And when I speak with administrators and teachers, superintendent, you know, and there's an expectation of districts like Hoyoke to compete and be at the same level as more affluent communities. Those communities aren't dealing with the disparities that exist in neighborhoods. In a lot of ways, we're asking our teachers to be case managers and caseworkers. We had to adopt a whole, uh, uh, community, uh, access engagement team just to help principals and teachers establish better, uh, relationships with households that are struggling. Um, you know, I think there's opportunity to, and on the subject of best practices and conversation, instead of threatening to take away, uh, control from districts, instead offering support to those local governments to overcome those health disparities, whether if it's public safety issues in neighborhoods and other, you know, domestic violence issues, Gladys and Alianza do a lot of work in that area. All those disparities that exist in, um, uh, that are barriers for a lot of low-income, uh, commu- uh, families, um, low, offering support for those local governments to navigate those issues so that kids, um, are, are coming to school, uh, with, uh, minimized, uh, neighborhood-level pressure, uh, and ready to learn, um, I think is, is the, is the real solution, the path. I think direct relationships with local governments to better improve services, municipal services opposed to, hey, if you don't get these scores up, we're taking away control from your district. I think is a good conversation we should probably have for the future as we try to figure out how to be better with these. But other than that, um, the temporary pivot was necessary. I was on the school board with Mr. Moriarty and frustrated about what was going on in our district and happy that receivership came in to help blow things up a little bit. Uh, but also understanding that it's a temporary pivot so that people can do some sur-sulching, come back to the table, figure things out, establish collaboration to then get us to where we need to be so that we can regain control of, uh, and, and practice our, our democratic process. So I appreciate you guys, uh, recognizing, um, uh, that level of partnership and have been meeting with us very regularly to try to figure this out because there was no blueprint. And now we, here we are today, celebrating this, uh, this moment and very much looking forward to continue to build upon what we've all done together, um, with our stakeholders and finally be able to get rid of those exit assurances, um, the training wheels, uh, so that, um, you know, we can, uh, get back to business and, and doing what's right for our community. So thank you so much.
Mr. Soto.
Yeah, I just also wanted to, uh, thank you all for the partnership. I want to thank, uh, the school committee. I want to thank, um, all of our teachers, all of our families, all of our principals, my leadership team. Um, this has been a lot of work over the last ten years, like a lot of blood, sweat, and tears. I'll never forget Dr. Zric, you know, when he first, uh, recruited me from Springfield. Um, you know, one, one thing that he got me with was, was Anthony, we're, we're not just, um, supporting a school district here. We're saving lives in Hoyoke. That really hit me and, um, working in Hoyoke for the last, uh, ten years, I, I, I see that. You know, the, the work that we're doing here is truly, uh, you know, all of us, our, our teachers, uh, our paraprofessionals, everybody. Uh, you know, we're, we're setting kids up and, and, and change, shaping their, their future, changing their lives, saving their lives in many cases. And, um, it, you know, it truly has been a partnership. I don't think anybody in this room has, has seen how much the state has partnered with us more than, than me and my leadership team. You know, many of it in private meetings, um, we, we not always agreed. Sometimes there were pushes, but there were good pushes and there were pushes for the right reasons. Um, we, we could all agree that students were at the center of, of all the tough decisions that we had to make and and all of the pushes and, and, and the encouragement sometimes was about improving the quality of instruction in our classrooms, improving, improving the learning environment and improving the lives of our students. And, um, um, you know, I, I can see a lot of the work because I was, I was here from the beginning, um, from when it, when it all started and, uh, you know, Hoyoke Public Schools is a much different place than it was ten years ago. We have a strong foundation to build off of. We've got some great leaders here in the room that are ready uh, to take on that challenge and, 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 you know, build off of the strong foundation that we have. Uh, so again, I just want to say, uh, thank you for, for the partnership and for everything that you all have poured into Hoyoke Public Schools. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Tensley Williams.
Words cannot express how I feel right now. Um, I'm Ward Two School Committee and you guys know my mantra. If you mess with kids, you mess with me. Um, as you can see, I wore my Hoyoke High School cap. I wore my Dean shirt. Even though this is Ward Two, all of the children belong to me. And I thank you all so much for hanging in there with us. You didn't give up on us. That's, that's huge. And I thank you so much for all, everyone that showed up today. And, and you all know, whatever I can do, don't hesitate to call on me and thank you so much. And we're going to help the kids and thank you for helping us get out of receivership. I just want to cry, but I'm happy. Thank you all and God bless you. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Ms. LaFave.
Why are you looking at me like? This is a, a bittersweet moment for me. It's been, um, five years in the making when we had our initial meeting. Um, then COVID hit. Um, then getting back to it again with that hopes of, are we ever going to see the end of, the end of the, the tunnel, right? There are many school committee members who are no longer with us that have also put in forth that fight um, and always putting our students first. Only one of them is still here, but not in the capacity of school committee member, but she's seated right next to you, Ms. Feliciano Sims. I'm sorry, Mrs. Feliciano. But the reason why I say it's bittersweet because yes, we are the first district, um, to come out of receivership. But I also feel for my colleagues in Lawrence and Southbridge. And I'm hoping that the work that we've done here can be like sort of like their path so that they can as well, um, come out of receivership and be able to celebrate that as well. Because they are dedicated school committee members just like we have been all along. Yes, there are maybe differences within their cities, their communities. But at the same time, their passion and dedication is exactly what we've been portraying over the years. Is it was always students first. Um, I thank you. I'm still in shock and I won't believe it till July first. Um, but, uh, thank you so much. It's an honor to get them back.
So.
Madam Vice Chair.
Hold on, hold on. I want to say something before.
Sorry, go ahead.
I just want to say, just kind of echoing what Ms. LaFave was saying, we, we're standing in the shoulders of giants, right? There was a lot of people who gave their blood, sweat, and tears for the students of Hoyoke who are not here anymore. And I'm talking about our past school committee members. I'm talking about staff and teachers who couldn't take it anymore and they had to leave. I'm talking about the families who left because they found other places where their children's needs were better served. And as much as that pains me to say, that was part of our growing pains. That was part of this whole process that was painful for all of us as a community. But like we always do as the Hoyoke community, we get together, we work together, we look at the things that we need. We work with very little resources, but that doesn't mean that we don't need anymore. Please legislators in the room, we do need more money. But it's, it's that sense of community. It is having our students, our families at the forefront, being there for them, making sure that every little decision that we make is for them, with them. Not just some of us making decisions in a room, but with them going out there in the community, asking for their input, what can we be doing better? And I'm really happy to say that even though we have had really strong communication plans to be able to talk to the community, we're just starting. This work is just beginning and there's a lot more that we need to do. We're just getting off the training wheels like the mayor was saying. But there's a lot of things that we need to do and for anybody who will hear this now or later if they hear the recording is we need all of you. We need everybody and we need to be able to work together for the common goal, which is to serve the students of Hoyoke to the best of our abilities, to the best of everybody in the Commonwealth has to offer. That's what we should be offering our students. So thank you so much. Ms. Wilson.
So, sitting here, to be honest, getting ready, I, I strangely thought of my parents and how proud they would be. Um, not just of me being on the school committee, not just me being an educator now, um, but of our community. You know, my mother raised in the flats, brought up to the Highlands. You know, through the death of her brother, that's how they purchased the house um, that, uh, you know, the family lived in. And I think about our community and I think about the fact that there's so many of us who have started out in lower steps than where we are, whether it's through education, whether it's through, you know, Whether it's through, you know, formal education, whether it's through their career choice, whether it's through, you know, families, neighbors supporting each other. And it just makes me think of Holyoke and how blessed I am for being raised in this city and choosing to live here. Because this is a city that comes together. And so many people came together. Um, not just at the war memorial those many years ago, it was you couldn't get in. It was standing room only and there's no other larger space in our community. And I wanna say that you were heard then. You continue to be heard and we wanna make sure that your voices, just like Dr. Rivera Cologne said. Your voices are very important to us. I'm happy there are people here today. I'm happy that people came to our last meeting. We need more community involvement. Whether it be through sending letters, asking information from us, you know, coming to our meetings, coming to our community. Events. We need more of you. We can't do it alone. Our teachers, our, you know, paraeducators, our principals. The the entire staff cannot do it alone. We need you, just like we continue needing your support. So thank you very much.
Mayor Garcia.
Is there anybody else? Uh, Madam Vice Chair motion to take a short fifteen minute recess, fifteen minute recess?
Do we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, recess starts now. Thank you so much, everybody. We'll be back in fifteen minutes. Calling this meeting back to order at six fifty-two. Roll call please, Ms. Feliciano.
Mayor Garcia. Dr. Rivera Cologne?
Here.
Mr. Sheen. Ms. LaFave?
Present.
Ms. LeBron Martinez?
Yeah.
Ms. Tensley Williams?
Okay.
Mr. Izaza? Mr. Willehan?
Here.
Mr. Colomar? And Ms. Wilson?
Present.
Do we have any public comment? Student reports? Alright, yeah, I figured they would be, but you know. I never wanna take that out or jump it. What if they're in Zoom? I never know. Thank you so much. Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Um, so included in your packet, uh, I have the student and family handbook. And this is definitely in draft format in the employee handbook as well. Um, we, there there were no major changes uh from, you know, from previous years. Uh, but you know, through our policy review, I I realized that policy CHCA. Uh, requires that the committee approve um, any handbooks that um. That discuss standards of conduct for conduct for employees or students. Um, you know, admittedly, one of the things, you know, this is a transition year and we just heard that. Uh, local control will be starting on July first, so uh, we have to work into our timeline. Next year to make sure that um, we we have the the student handbooks. And the employee handbooks ready for the committee's approval before we can disseminate it. We do have, um, you know, any employees that are getting hired. That are not part of a collective bargaining agreement, receive a copy of the student handbook, I mean, uh, of the employee handbook. And uh, one of the changes that we made, um, I wanna say a couple of years ago is. Each school used to have their own student handbook, um, and we created one unified handbook. That all schools must use and distribute to their families on an annual basis. Um, and then any. Any addendums that they would like to add, um, those are submitted to the superintendent for approval. And an addendum could be, you know, uh, in our handbook, we don't, we don't talk about like what our mascot is. We don't talk about whether or not. There are uniforms at the school and what colors the uniforms are. And at the high school, you know, the the, an example is at the high school, there's there's other. Pieces of expectations for kids around senior activities and participation in sports and things of that nature. So. Um, those addendums, they they will be, you know, uh, schools will be working on them over the summer. Um, there there will be no major changes to the drafts that you have in front of you. Other than like updating links, um, so we where we have some links that maybe need to be updated. One of them, eh, as an e- example is like the the arc of the year. That we have, um, there's there's specific links that that need to be updated, but none that uh substantively change any of the. Employee handbook. So I'm just hoping that, you know, um, because we gotta distribute these to employees as they hire. Um, that we we make sure that the committee has an opportunity to review them because these do, these are. Policy, right? Um, approval of the student handbook is, um, you know, i- is just like school committee policy. So. Uh, you you have a copy of both the student family handbook and you have a copy of the employee handbook. And um, we're hoping that any changes or questions or anything that you may have. Um, that you uh bring them to my attention so that we can work on them.
Ms. Wilson.
Because I do have a couple um, questions on them. And I I would feel that. Any addendum is in the spirit of a handbook and that should also be approved by the school committee. So each school, when they get an addendum, that should also be approved.
So what, yeah, when those are ready, I can I can bring them in.
Okay.
Um, and you know, that that should be a note for us because we, I know we have a meeting in July and a meeting in August. Um, so we'll work on, uh, you know, setting a deadline for our our school leaders to to provide those addendums to us so that we can. Get them on the next school committee agenda.
Thank you.
Ms. Stansley Williams.
Mr. Soto, will we get a copy of the handbooks?
Uh, you have them in your packet.
Oh, then we're all set. Thank you.
So I have a question for Mr. Mogel who's here in the audience. So if you don't mind stepping up to the mic.
Ms. Wilson, you have a question mark face.
I do. I'm wondering, do we have to, with Robert's rules, do we have to make any motion? Um, as a committee to allow someone to come up and speak, or is it just based on the request of a school committee member?
The vice chair has to acknowledge.
Okay, thank you.
It is one of the, I looked it up too, just to make sure, because I wanted to know, but it's at the discretion of the chair, so.
That's how it's just training wheels, just making sure. Thank you.
No, but I was right there with you. So thank you so much. Mr. Mogel, I know that one of the very first first things that we got to work on together. Was looking at the student handbook. And there was a a group of people who looked up. All the different things from the parts of the handbooks and looking at. Looking at it through an equity lens and being able to be inclusive and making sure that it was. User friendly in a way as well. And because that's not something that might be. Common knowledge for everybody, especially people who might be watching, I was wondering if you could tell us a little bit about how that process was.
Sure. Good afternoon, everybody. Uh, so typically speaking, the student handbook is not necessarily reviewed by students. Um, and so this year, we we have not gotten it in front of students the way I would like, but we've gotten some feedbacks specifically. Uh, there's a subgroup of high school students that we meet with at Dean, um, and they've offered a lot of feedback. What was different, though, was they were offering feedback to their specific handbook. And I said, well, we're not having a specific school handbook. So what I've gotten feedback from students is. What are the things that we're not addressing that we should be addressing in the handbook? Um, I definitely think that each year it could get better. Um, I think next year I would probably be a lot uh sooner in getting in front of students, getting a larger group of students and families. Um, and some of the things in the handbook, unfortunately, you can't change, right? They're like policy and law. Um, and so sometimes with a lot of our students. As with any children, it's the why. They they just wanna know the why. Why is that there as opposed to like just having a rule? And so. Generally speaking, our high school kids, once you can articulate why, they more or less are pretty accepting. Um, sometimes, you know. The cell phone uh debate continues is what I'll say with the high school kids, but that's a different story.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mogel.
You're welcome.
Can I?
Ms. Wilson.
Can I ask just a clarifying? So you referred to the student handbook. Is there another handbook outside the family handbook? That's the student handbook, or they were just using those terms interchangeably?
I'm sorry, I'm using them interchangeably. It it really should be the family and student handbook.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to be clear about that because my understanding was was the family. So thank you very much.
Yeah, of course.
Ms. Wilson.
Yeah, sorry, it's gonna be me again. So I love the fact that for someone who gets this document online, there are so many wonderful links. But for those people who don't have it online and who don't have access. How do we guarantee that they can go into HPS NCA policy? On page sixteen, how can they go, you know, eve- you know, into different things for how attendance works, the attendance works? How is that gonna happen?
So great question. Uh, so there's a couple, couple of pivot points throughout the year that are really important that are led by the family engagement team. For example, as part of the transition from eighth to ninth grade, there's a freshman orientation around NCA policy. Um, at the beginning of this year, what we'll be doing a lot stronger, and we did it beginning of this year as well. Beginning of next year is we'll be sharing attendance data, in particular from attendance works. So we try to get in front of families as much as we try to share through websites, because we know a lot, some of our families don't have access to some of those resources. So really just actually trying to educate them around the policy and knowing what their uh, resources are. So we try to do that. I cannot say that we do that for every family per se, but that's another way we try to make sure that families are very much in the. Know around uh their rights and information. You're welcome.
Thank you so much, Mr. Colomar.
Yeah, excuse me. Does the student council look at this?
So excellent question. They did not this year, but we're gonna be doing something different. I don't wanna talk overly about it. But Mr. Soto, if I could talk a little bit about YPAR, if that's okay. Um, so next year. We are initiating something called Youth Participatory Action Research. Uh, it's a pretty widely popular uh utilized tool to get student voice. Uh, we're probably more than likely gonna start at one school. I like to, I like the idea of going slow to go long, if that makes sense. And not trying to just implement something district wide and then it dies in a year. Um, and so. We're actually lifting student voice through that. So that's some of the work I've started with some of the students at Dean. Um, in particular conversations around cell phone policies and things like that. So they will look at it again. There's but so much that could be changed because a lot of it is policy and law. Um, but some of the things that can be changed, we wanna talk about, for example, dress code. That's something that comes up constantly with our students. And so that's important for them to have some input and thought behind it. Um, and believe it or not, they actually are very vocal around the dress code and do believe there should be a dress code, which is surprising. Um, from what I would have thought. So I think getting more student voice, I think. Um, I'm constantly surprised by how much our students have to say and we just have to start lifting their voice. So that'll be sort of. So one of the strategic priorities we're focused on next year is ensuring that students actually have voice.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Ms. LaFave.
So I know Ms. Tensley Williams had asked, she doesn't, they didn't print it for the packet. So I don't know if there's like a, something that we can get.
I Irene can make sure.
At least she has it. Um, my only other question is. Um, the MOU between the the police department and the school district, when is that going to be reviewed? And when will it be brought up to the school committee?
Um, Sean, do you, do you know when that, is it an annual, is it annual or is it a three year MOU? Like, do we know what?
Please step to the mic. Thank you, Ms. Ron Gannon.
Um, I'll have to check the exact language on the renewal. We did do a thorough update last year and we can share that with the committee if you haven't received it yet. But I'll I'll check on the exact timing of the renewal.
Well, what I am gonna mention is according to this draft handbook that you have here, it's done annually. So if in any case that you guys went into a three year, you know, binding agreement, this would then have to be changed before you.
Yeah, we do, we do have to submit it annually to the state anyway, so. Um, I know we've already had conversations with uh our new police chief and there were some, like. It it's, it is going to be updated this for this upcoming school year, so we'll make sure that we include a copy of that.
Great.
To the school committee.
I believe that this might, that people might need a little bit more time with this drafts. Is that a correct assumption?
Ms. Wilson.
My understanding was that if we have any suggestions to it, we submit them to the. I'm gonna use the term thinking it's July first, the interim superintendent. Um, that's my understanding. So so I'm not sure what the timeline is for bringing information back in order for us to approve. So that's where you're headed. Yes, thank you.
Ms. LaFave.
That's what I was gonna ask. What's the cutoff time? By when do you need this readily available?
We would like, so as I, as I mentioned, you know, in in kind of framing this conversation, if we hire. An employee on July second, we we have to give them a handbook. So this is the draft that they're gonna get. Um, and I recognize that the policy requires school committee approval before dissemination, but because of the nature of. You know, we just found out right now that that July one, we are officially getting out of receivership. Um, you know, there was, there wasn't, you know, we weren't able to meet that timeline for this transition year. And I think that that. That same rule applies for the student and family handbook. What I'd like to do. Is at the next school committee meeting, hopefully get a vote to approve the this draft handbook. And any addendums that we may have if they're ready. Um, so that, you know, the the policy does state that before we. Dissim- before we distribute them to families, that school committee um, gives their approval. What you have in front of you represents, you know, um, the student and family handbook that has been in place for. For a while, I think that, you know, we've made small changes, you know, that you guys have all been included in, um, you know, um. There was reference to the cell phone procedures and things like that, that had come before this. Before this board and we've had multiple meetings on that, but um, you, we, we discussed at length, you know, a retention policy last year. That you'll see in there. So no- nothing in here is is new. That uh, so to speak for, um, it's it's what our fa- families have received last year and in previous years, but we like. Uh, Dr. Rivera Cologne mentioned, we did go through it with a fine tooth comb a few years ago and and just. Made sure that it re- you know, it represented the equity commitments that we have and made sure that, um. It got a a big refresh a few years ago. So hopefully with with some time, you guys, if if there's anything like concerning. I think one of the things that you will notice, Ms. Wilson, um, as the person that's overseeing the policy. Revisions, like there's gonna be some inconsistencies with some old policies that we may have, but that should. Prompt us to go back to that policy and update it to reflect what's happening in practice, but. This is uh most up to date. You know, if we, eh, an example of that is is if we have in in the handbook. If we have anything around Title Nine, the language in here is updated to the new. Uh, laws and I'm not so sure that the the policy that we have on our website i- is the newest one. Um, but that's just an example of where there may be some inconsistencies. And you know, what I'm hopeful for is that when we run into situations like that, that we just work collaboratively to fix them. It's not a gotcha. Or we're not trying to, you know, violate school committee policies where, you know, this is a transition year and we're trying to update our policies. And we're trying to uh keep you all as school committee members informed as to what's going on in in pro- in practice. And and how that impacts, you know, your your own policies. Um, so. Our team is going through that in detail over the next few weeks as well, like looking at all of our personnel policies. Looking at the employee handbook, looking at all of our student school committee policies and looking at the student and family handbook. And identifying some things that we might prompt, uh, you know, some discussion about whether or not, you know, uh, we wanna update certain policies.
Thank you. Ms. LaFave.
I'm sorry, I'm just looking real quickly at the restraint pol- um, the restraint section, section here. And I tried to look real quickly at the policy. So if I have any questions. So, if I have any questions or anything, I can email you. But right now, what I'm trying to figure out is, is a nurse assessing this, the student? Is, or is the nurse present during a restraint?
It's, they're assessing a student after for sure. Sometimes if a restraint happens, we can't guarantee that there's gonna be a nurse there, right? Like?
So, then who is monitoring to ensure that there's also a release attempt? And then if it's ineffective, then you restraining, you go back to restraining. You shouldn't hold somebody down for such a long period of time. There should be. So, I'm trying to look, but any questions that I may have, I'll send it.
Yeah, what I would ask is that if anything related to the student and family handbook, if you can email myself and Mr. Mogal. Anything that relates to the employee handbook, if you can email myself and Ms. Beth Gage, that would be super helpful. Beth Gage is the employee handbook and me, and Mr. Mogal would be the student and family handbook and me.
All right. So, just one last thing, just making sure everybody knows what their homework is. We're gonna be looking through this drafts and sending feedback via email to Anthony and Mr. Mogal. If his feedback on student and family handbook, and if it's in the employee handbook, it's gonna be Anthony and Beth Gage. Are we good? Excellent, because we will be voting on this on our next meeting, and the next meeting is gonna be pretty packed because it's the only meeting in July and our first one under local control. So, we'll have a lot to do. So, please save us some time and make sure that you do this ahead of time. Thank you. All right. Moving on to new business. So, we have our FYM staff summer conferences.
Yeah, again, um, thank you to Ms. Wilson's work on the, on the policies. One of the policies that we came across was around staff travel. And again, I recognize that this is a transition year, and, you know, part of what we have to do for next year is make sure that we have all of these approved within a thirty day, thirty days prior to that. These had come to me ahead of time, and I had approved them, and that was the receivership. That was part of, you know, during receivership, but post-July one, we want to make sure that you all are aware of any conferences that, that staff are going to that are more than one day. So, the policy requires school committee approval when, when a staff is going to a conference for longer than a day and is gonna be absent from their duties. My, I go to the superintendent, the MASs puts on an annual institute, so I will be going to that annual institute as I do every year to make sure I maintain the PDPs that I need to continue with my superintendent license, and that conference is gonna be in Mashpee, July fourteenth through the seventeenth. I've included a, a draft agenda. I know that they go through a process of updating the agenda up until the meeting. And that was approved by the commissioner and Ms. Courier, who is our chief of people services, and members of her team will be going to the Western Mass Special Education Directors Conference, again, agenda attached. And our Jenny Malave, our director of technology and data services, is going to be going to a, the Edge Power School Conference in July. We will be switching from School Brains to Power School. This has been a project that we've been working on for over a year now. We're gonna be going live with Power School soon. And it's important that Ms. Malave stay up to date, particularly around some, what Power School can do with the new IEP system and how we can use Power School to help with, with that process. So, we're hoping that Ms. Malave can go to that conference and bring back some, you know, kind of a train-the-trainer model type and see how, if there's anything that, that we can implement here with, with Power School. And then lastly, we have Alex Selian Saldana, who's one of our, who's our face coordinator and team lead. We have a partnership with the Equity Imperative, and they are having a conference around strengthening strategies for family engagement. And he will be going to that conference next week, I believe, and bringing, you know, as the face team lead, bringing back some of those strategies to Mr. Mogal and to the rest of the team to hopefully strengthen a lot of the, the family engagements, family engagement strategies that we already have in place. And that's all that we know of for the month, for the summer months.
Thank you so much, and know that this was a request in order for us to be prepared as we move forward because this is something that we will need to approve in the future. These were all already approved based on the current process, but in the future, we will have to approve these. So, again, part of our training wheels. All right. Next up, we have approval of meeting minutes.
Both at the school, well, do we, do we want to take them as a package?
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the finance and operations meeting minutes from March twenty-seventh and for seventeenth as a package.
All right. Seconded by Ms. Tensley-Williams. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Motion to approve or to accept and approve the meeting minutes of the school committee for three twenty-four, twenty-five, four fourteen, twenty-five, four twenty-eight, twenty-five, five twelve, twenty-five.
You have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Willehan?
Just wanna thank our executive secretary for putting, putting the minutes together.
Thank you. What would we do without you, Ms. Feliciano?
He's feeling appreciated right now.
We will embarrassingly appreciate you, Ms. Feliciano. Thank you so much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Excellent. So, moving on, budget transfers. We have the May sixth budget transfer. That the school committee vote to approve the budget transfer of unspent funds to purchase math curriculum in contract with a firm to audit phone lines for the amount of fifty-four thousand three hundred and eighty-six. Is this gonna suck, Katie? We get to discussion once we have a motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Wilson, seconded by Mr. Isasa. Discussion, Ms. Wilson?
So, as we continue moving through the process, I just want to make sure that this budget transfer went to the subcommittee. I'm not sure if it was one of the ones that we've been discussing for quite some time. I'm just double checking our process.
Mr. Willehan?
Yep. Uh, these were discussed in my finance, um, report at the last meeting.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Mr. Willehan.
Check the notes.
Yep. Thank you. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to June seventeen budget transfer. That the school committee vote to approve the budget transfer of unspent funds from Dean Bacon position for instructional materials, equipment for the purchase of new computers for the programming and web shop in the amount of thirty-three thousand three hundred and seventy-five.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. LaFave, second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Colomar. Discussion, Mr. Willehan?
Thank you. Yeah, this transfer was not brought to the finance committee meeting because of the timeliness of the request.
Right? Mr. Soto?
Yeah, I mean, these are, these are end-of-year transfers that we're trying to do, and from what I understand, processes, they come here first. And if there is a referral to a subcommittee for further discussion, that referral is made. Because of the nature of end of year, we're hoping that, we're hoping that it's okay to get a vote on them tonight so that we can take care of this and make sure that the programming and web gets the computers that they need for, and that if, if the full committee has any questions or, or discussion, that, that we can have that tonight, given that it is the end of the year.
Thank you. Ms. LaFave?
Mr. Willehan, is the finance subcommittee okay with it coming straightforward, or did you expect a refer to your subcommittee?
Um, well, just from, well, we didn't really expect it just because of nature, our, our meeting is so late in the fiscal year. And we have to spend the money, we have to use it or lose it. Okay, so, so I'm fine with it. I'm speaking for myself.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Updates of committees, Policy and Governance Subcommittee. Ms. Wilson?
So, we had a meeting. We moved through most of I, which is very long. And we should be finishing up the rest of the policies at our next meeting, at least the, the ones that we're making our first clean pass-through as a subcommittee. That meeting, just so the public knows, is on Monday, June thirtieth at ten AM at Suffolk Street. And I do anticipate having policies to bring to full committee for our next meeting.
Thank you so much. Finance and Operations, Mr. Willehan?
Thank you. Our next meeting is scheduled for June twenty-sixth at five-thirty at fifty-seven Suffolk Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Any updates from Joint City Council School Committee?
Yes, I spoke to Kevin Jordan, and we're gonna have a meeting in August.
Thank you so much. Local Control Subcommittee, Ms. LaFave?
Nothing to report.
Then we'll have the Leadership Accountability and Measurement, but.
Yeah. We don't have any upcoming meeting.
Excellent. Thank you. Ongoing business, policy for discussion, DJE procurement requirement.
Yeah, and I'm.
Hold on. Ms. LaFave?
Okay, so that one doesn't have a motion attached to it, correct? So, that one's just for discussion. I do recall policy DJE, the procurement, was where it was tabled on April twenty-eighth because of the discrepancy with the twenty-five thousand and the fifty thousand. I do see your recommendation that you'd like to go according to chapter thirty-B. But was that brought up at the policy subcommittee? Or are we just bringing it here now? Because?
It was, it was tabled at the meeting where we were gonna discuss it. The, and, and this is the only reason that I asked to bring it back up is because there's a significant difference in, in what I believe to be a very old school committee policy that hasn't been updated to reflect the new guidelines. I remember when I first started here, the, the, anything over twenty-five thousand dollars had to go out to bid. And since then, it, that threshold moved up to fifty thousand dollars, you know, I think in twenty-sixteen. And even more recently, that threshold moved up to a hundred thousand dollars to allow, you know, just to, to maintain compliance with state law, but to allow, uh, uh, schools to, you know, to just practice, make it, make it easier to get things in front of kids and get things in front of teachers and not go through, you know, a bidding process when, when the threshold was created many, many, many years ago, right? So, I, I am hoping that, that like, come July one, we can operate according to chapter thirty-B because it's what the city currently operates under as well. And, and I don't, you know, my, my fear was that we were gonna have to all of a sudden change our process to reflect an old policy in that we would get backed up on getting supplies to students and, and teachers for the start of the school year. So, that's why I brought it up. And looking forward to the discussion, and I have Sean here as well.
Ms. Wilson?
So, it was this policy, DJE was reviewed by the policy subcommittee. There is different language that would have been recommended to the full school committee for review. Other than the policy DJE bidding that's being presented in our packet tonight. And it does use the MASs language. And so, the policy I'm seeing, while it aligns to it, it does not use the MASs language. But, and so as a policy subcommittee, we would not, we have not reviewed this version presented to, as a full subcommittee, as a full committee tonight.
Yeah. Can I respond to that?
Yes.
Um, we did pull this off of MASs's website. Is that correct, Sean?
No. Because it's not.
So, I think there was, there were different versions. On the MASs's website, there was a more current version. We were looking for something that would align with thirty-B. I think we're open to it also being reviewed the policy subcommittee. We're just wondering if as of July first, we can continue operating sort of as we have been until the policy is fully reviewed. And I'm happy to come to any policy subcommittee. A lot of our order, and one reason being is that a lot of our ordering takes place in July and August. And so, to go back to the twenty-five thousand dollar threshold for those two months would, it would hinder a lot of the purchasing that happens over the summer.
So, Ms. Wilson?
So, the policy recommendation that, and I'm trying to pull it up because I have so many tabs open, I apologize. The clean version does, that we would be submitting does submit for a service, any supply or service over fifty thousand dollars. That would be the language that we are presenting. The only other dollar value that is the procurement for a supplier service in the amount of ten thousand or greater, but not more than fifty thousand, shall be awarded to a responsible party offering blah, blah, blah. Three written quotes. So, and then less than ten thousand would be obtained through the exercise of sound business practices. So, it does meet that, my understanding of the current requirements.
That, that's the old threshold, right, Sean?
Right. So, so that, are you looking at the policy tracker and the proposed version?
No, I'm, I was looking at, but I'm, I'm looking at the MASs model, and it, it says fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, that, Ms. Wilson, that is, it used to be fifty thousand dollars, and chapter thirty-B updated their threshold to a hundred thousand dollars, which is what we've been following with the city currently. There's nothing preventing the, the school committee from setting a policy that's stricter than thirty-B, which fifty thousand dollars would be stricter. And if it is the will of the body that, that they want to have a stricter, uh, uh, policy around what goes out to bid, if they want to have a, a, you know, a stricter policy than what the state law requires, that's fine. It just comes at added expenses and more time trying to get things. And we wanted, we wanted to make sure that you all were aware of the impact of that. Right now, if it's under one hundred thousand dollars, we, we don't actually have to go through a formal bid process. Most of the stuff that we, we do with that, it, it's, it's actually on state contract anyway, which competitive bids have had, and we usually get three quotes off of a, of a state bid contract. Anything over that, we, you know, we follow thirty-B, and we, we have to publicly advertise it for two weeks. And if we're, you know, if we're actually going the RFB route, which is just going with the lowest cost, we, we have to select the lowest cost from the responsible bidder. And if we go the RFP route, it just, it allows us to weigh qualitative factors into, into the, into the process.
Can I, can I just get a clarification? What, when you refer to something has changed, what, what has changed?
The threshold. The threshold for.
Under what law?
Chapter thirty B.
And when was this changed? Guesstimating.
Well, so actually, I I think this policy is the most recent M A S C policy and it says the acts of twenty twenty-two.
Right, so that's why I'm just because. I'm just, I I'd be going back to research chapter. Thirty to see if it is fifty or is it the hundred, because the M A S C policy does speak to the fifty. And it was done in tw- twenty twenty-two.
So I think there's a no at the end of the M A S C policy that speaks to the change in thirty B. And it speaks to what school committee is being able to have a more restrictive policy if they want.
Mr. Wellahan.
Thank you. Yeah, just yeah, just to follow what what um, Mr. Soto said, the. The thresholds have been increased substantially over the last ten years. It's because of, you know, inflation, the rate of inflation. You know, they had the old bidding five thousand dollar for services for a consultant. Christ, that that'd be eaten up in a month. You know, so thresholds have been increased substantially. We should be relying on the attorney general's determination of thirty B. Okay, the attorney general sets the thresholds and the law. That's what a law goes to. So I would take away the. The the school associations, what their websites, who knows when they're updated, might be done by interns, who knows? Go to the attorney general website, get the current thresholds with thirty B. We shouldn't be using those. We shouldn't have higher thresholds. The city uses those. We should be using those. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LaFave.
So I am looking at the M A S C policy and it's exactly what's in the attachment um. To the agenda. So is that the one um? That Ms. Wilson is saying was not the one, or which one are we talking about? And I. Cause it, I mean, it's it's there. I mean, it it's up to the description of the school committee, whether they wanna go from the fifty to the hundred thousand.
Ms. Wilson.
I just need to clarify, when I. Entered this previously, it gave me something very different. I just wanna, I I seriously, I have a document that looks completely different. Than when I looked into this again. So I just wanna.
Are you saying that now it matches? That's the question.
Yes. It's bizarre, I swear.
That's okay. Ms. LaFave.
So are. So would the motion then be? Now, would this go for first reading now because of all the major changes to it? Or are we, because it was tabled the first time, or are we going straight into second reading?
Ms. Wilson.
So this is first reading because it hasn't been posted for public comment. So the first reading, if we approve this, this is a a title change to the policy. It used to be called bidding requirements. We are now renaming it or request rename it procurement requirements. And then um. I'm trying to find thirty B where it tells me. A hundred thousand dollars. Is the amount, if someone can come assist me, because I can't speak to it if I can't see it.
Thank you for the assistance. Mr. Soto.
Yeah, I, you know, I I I recognize that there may be some more dialogue that we have to have. What? What Sean and I were hoping for is that come July one. That, you know, that we can just make sure that we're following our current state procurement laws. And not go to the exist, even if we were to go with this new policy, it still hasn't gone through the full proli- process of being adopted. So I I I I'm just requesting that that you grant us permission for July one to make sure that we have. That we're following uh chapter thirty B. And that we can then resolve what the official school committee policy is gonna be. With Ms. Wilson and go through that process. And not worry about our existing policy that has a twenty-five thousand dollar threshold that is very old. Because we haven't gone through the the full process to get that policy adopted.
Ms. Wilson.
What was the motion on the floor?
There isn't one.
There wasn't one yet.
So I would like to make a motion um to uh approve as a first read. Let me go to it. D J E. And it's currently listed as uh. Bidding currently, but we're gonna be shifting that to procure procurement. Requirements. And I'm going to request that um file, coming in line with Massachusetts updated general law. That we shift the anytime where it says over fifty thousand dollars to over one hundred thousand dollars. So that would be in the one two third paragraph.
Second.
Second, discussion. Mr. Wellahan.
I mean, there's all sorts of provisions in thirty B. You're just quoting one, one, one part of it. I mean, uh, you know, if you go to the national law, you know, the, you know, just. You know, a procurement in the amount of less than ten thousand dollars shall be obtained through the exercise of sound business practices. So that's one, one part of thirty B. That's another part of thirty B. I mean, there's, I mean, are we just. Nipicking thirty B and just putting in some of the ones here in this policy? We should just reference. Thirty B general, just just the latest provisions, you know, not rely on other. Websites. I mean, that's that's my uh recommendation. There's, you know, thirty B is 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 more than this. It's more than this paragraph.
Ms. Wilson.
So the attachment. And I'm gonna come back to the beginning, in our packet where it says policy D J E bidding. The policy, I'm gonna reference back that it does not match. It does not match the language that would have been proposed by the policy subcommittee. So um. I'm gonna make a commitment that this policy come to our next meeting on the thirtieth. But prior to that, I would like to then. Resign my previous motion. And I would like to make a motion just to acknowledge and um what um. Mr. Soto is looking for, that he continue to operate um as lo- well as Mr. Mangano. Um, our our policies according to Massachusetts general law. Um, when with regards to procurement and not what is currently listed in our policy, because it is very outdated.
Ms. LaFave.
I'm just a little bit concerned. Are are you sure that we can even? Allow for that? And here's the other concern that I have. You talk a lot about July first and. But when we're looking at policies, right, that we've even voted some to be effective July first. How are they going to be? In our own policy so that people know that those are effective July first? Have they been sent to M A S C for the update? So that it starts. Reflecting what we've already approved?
So point of order, if we could stay on topic.
Well, this is on topic because um my question is, how can we say that? We're not gonna follow a policy and we're giving them the go ahead to do. I'm just a little bit confused here.
Mr. Soto.
I like, look, this. Our policy review has been ongoing all year and the commissioner himself recognized that this was gonna be an ongoing process. I mean, we currently have a policy on our website that lists an org chart of people that aren't even here. So type like, are we supposed to call those people back and and work? And have them work here again, like, that's, so there are some definite like policies that are old. And we're gonna be going through the process of updating them. Um, and and I am at, you know, during this transition year, like. Uh, Ms. Wilson has been working really hard to try to get this and, you know, we're um. We're almost done and then we gotta really look at what's been posted for public comment. What the next step is, which ones have to come here for second reading? And we hope to do that, you know, um, I know uh Shayna and Irene have been trying to get a meeting on the books, but we're gonna be meeting in July. Um, when when we have a little more time to just kinda get an update on that, but in the meantime. You know, uh, the reason why this one came was because it was just so important, like Sean was looking at it and was like, wait a minute. Does this mean that we gotta revert back and like, we like, go back to the twenty-five thousand dollar threshold? And I asked my team to go through. And look at any policies that like would, that were really concerned with the July first deadline, and that was the one that would. Would have like a detrimental impact on, you know, getting ready for school and making sure kids have supplies.
Mr. Collmar.
Yeah, just a question. On any of these policies, not not just the one we're discussing, but on any of these policies. Are they forever or until we change them?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Wilson.
Uh, until we until we update them as a school committee. Um, or in in some cases, the law changes which supersedes our policy. So the policy D J E that we currently have listed references thirty B. As a legal reference. So, I mean, it does reference that information that was updated, even though our policy wasn't updated. And so right now we have a stricter policy, but it's gonna restrict our district's ability to move in a swift manner. Is why I'm saying I'd be willing to make that shift. To allow them, knowing that this is gonna come on our meeting on the thirtieth. This will then be on our agenda item for our following full school committee meeting, and we can move through this very quickly. But I understand your concern.
Ms. LaFave.
I'm gonna save my comment for after we've gone through this and it'll be my little announcement instead. We'll call it an announcement. We'll move this along.
Right? Any further discussion? If not. All those in favor?
I.
Any opposed?
No.
Any abstain? Motion passes. Right, so that was. D J E. And then next we have policy second final reading. Ms. Wilson.
I did notice an error. And I'm gonna find my notes, because I wrote it down here. B D H. And B E. Sorry, B E D H. Which is public comment at school committee and B E D B, agenda format, do not match. As I realized. It says in B E D H. That um public comment is for three minutes. And under B E D B, it says two minutes. And the intent was two minutes. So. To clarify that B E D H needs to be updated to have a two-minute maximum. But I'm uh willing to take any questions now.
Ms. LaFave.
I'd like to put in a motion to take each one separately because I do have concerns.
Second half.
Right? Some motion to approve a second reading for a B E school committee meeting.
So moved.
So fifth, second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Wilson, discussion. Mr. Wellahan.
Is there any mention of like the times of our meetings? When we have the meetings and the time, I think we should have. Timeframes on these. I know the. The city of Hoyok, the city council, they cannot hold a meeting. I think it's after five PM. You know, we don't have that in our rules for whatever reason.
Before five PM.
Before five, yeah, we can't have a meeting, they can't have a meeting before five. PM, you know, we're meeting at ten o'clock. At noon, it's just sort of um, that goes against the. You know, just the public that works can't attend these meetings. You know, even though they're recorded, sometimes they're not recorded. I just think it it goes against the spirit of the law. I think we should have our meetings, the minimum should be five, five PM.
Ms. LaFave.
I had asked that question as well myself, and it's basically the subcommittees can. Hold them at any given time as long as they're posted. And there's an avenue for people to um access it. Um, because I brought up your same concerns. Um, and that's what I was told when they looked at um. Oh, my gosh. I don't know if it was the attorney general or what it was, but. It doesn't specify that you have to hold those after a certain time. The school committee is something different. Aside from your. Subcommittees, your subcommittees can. But I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, um.
Mr. Willie.
I think the city council. Here in Hoyok, I think they're concerned about some of the, some of the boards and some of the, some of the commissions. You know, the fire commission, DPW, gas electric, have their meetings at noon every day, you know, um. So I, again, that just, um, the public, you know, can't access those meetings. Their their ability to. Watch and attend those meetings are hindered. Okay, whether they're televised or not. You know, they if they can't attend that meeting at noon because they're working, okay? Okay, that, to me, that. That doesn't. Hold right with me, okay? They should be. The public should have access to these meetings, you know, whether we have to or not, whether there's a law written or not. You know, we can have our own internal rule here, and that's what the city council has here, here in Hoyok.
Ms. Wilson.
So I completely lost my train of thought. Um, oh, so um, while I understand, Mr. Wellahan, your concern about working adults, many adults work second shift. Um, so those same individuals would not be able to attend the meeting and maybe they could attend the meeting now that it was at ten AM or noon. So um, you know, we we've, we're now a society that works twenty-four seven pretty much. Um, unlike when our forefathers started our laws about, you know, thinking that the educated. And I'm gonna say the words white males would be home um at their being able to attend these meetings. Now life is much different. So.
To approve it for a second reading.
Ms. LaFave.
So did anybody amend it? I I don't know um if committee member Wellahan was looking at amending it or, cause. I know I put forth the motion and someone seconded, so not sure.
I asked a question. I'll make the motion to just have um. That no subcommittee can meet before five PM.
Second half.
On the amendment, oh, Ms. LaFave.
So then wouldn't? This now be a first reading? With all the the change, I need a clarification as to what we're.
So in addition, so I would. They, it's a significant, I think, change, so it would go back to a first read. Because if we're adding something about the time of our meetings, if that um. Goes through, then it would be brought back as a first read. So now it would need to be, the language would need to be updated. And in um have the public comment for another two weeks.
Discussion on the amendment?
Yes.
Ms. Dance, the willing.
Wellahan, you're saying that no meetings should be before five.
I I can hear you, Ms. Dance.
So Mr. Wellahan is saying no meetings should, people should be able to meet before five PM because people are at work during the day. That makes a lot of sense, but I don't know who's off and who's working, so that's tough.
Mr. Collmar.
What what about a uh? An emergency, a special concern that has to be done? We we couldn't meet before five o'clock?
Mr. Wellahan.
Go ahead.
Mr. Soto.
Um, eh, I'm just looking at B E and and it speaks specifically to regular me- Um, eh, I'm just looking at BE and it, and it speaks specifically to regular meetings and special meetings. Eh, there's no mention of subcommittees, so I don't know if. Eh, like even if we. Put in here. A. A, a stipulation that limited to after five, five o'clock or later. Um, would that not apply to subcommittee meetings or do we need to clarify that and specify that here? Because I know regular meeting and special meeting is different than subcommittee meetings.
That's correct, Mr. Soto. Ms. LaFave.
So I'm gonna assume that it would be a number three added under special meeting and it's gonna say subcommittee meetings. And then in there, at some point in there, we'll trans. I guess even in the first sentence, if I'm looking, the school committee will transact all business at official meetings of the committee. No earlier than. I, I don't know, however, it, it's determined that it's gonna read. But that's basically, they're gonna have to add the number three, so it goes back to a first read and posting. So.
So we're back up.
Then I'm gonna amend the motion to refer back to. Are we not referring back for the changes or we're gonna do it as a first read to go back?
I think I, this is. This would be a language that we would refer back to the full school committee to make a decision on. Um, ju- I would not be, we'd be going, okay, let's put it in, you, you know what I mean, because. So, you know, the amendment to the motion is, you know, what's on the floor and. I, I don't feel the need for it to go back to the policy subcommittee. Based upon the views of school committee members. Do you know what I'm saying? We, we move on the amendment.
Alright, let's vote on the amendment. Yes. Right.
I am, it's me, it's me, it's me, no.
Do we need a roll call vote for this?
I don't know, she just. No one's online. We're all present.
Alright, all those in favor? Any opposed?
No.
Okay, so that was three no's.
No.
No, four no's. Alright.
Can I have a second to that?
Yes.
Second.
Second motion, I second the motion.
Alright.
I know, don't you worry. Didn't expect all the drama. Ms. Wilson?
No.
Um, Dr. Vera Cologne?
Yes.
Alright. Uh, Ms. LaFave?
No.
Uh, Mrs. Scott?
Sorry, I'm gonna need clarification, so I'm confused, if we're voting yes, is that we're not agreeing to meetings before. I mean, before five?
You're voting yes to add subcommittees to this policy here.
That we cannot.
Subcommittee meeting and add the five o'clock. Not before five.
If you're saying yes, you're saying yes, that you want subcommittees and all school committee meetings to be at five o'clock or later. If you vote no, you're saying you're, we're continuing with that's, subcommittees can meet before five PM.
So yes, we'll keep it at the way we have it, you're saying?
No.
No.
No, if you vote yes, meetings can take place at five or later for full school committee and subcommittees. If we say no, then we are saying that we still want to ha- have the availability of having meetings during before five. Yes, after five PM only. No, subcommittees can meet before five. Did that make sense?
Yes, it does. I'm gonna vote, but I think, I'm gonna vote on it because I'm, but it, I don't think it'll make. Others accommodations as well, like a person that has to sit on that committee. Be available to do it at all times, so I'm somewhat torn about this situation, the way that it's set up. Um, I'm available now, but I don't know who comes in my shoes and say that they're available then, you know what I mean? So. So I'm just gonna say yes, because I, I don't know if it'll accommodate everyone else.
Ms. Tensley Williams?
Yes, I believe. We cannot meet before five.
Correct, if you vote yes, you're saying that we cannot meet before five PM.
Yes.
Mr. Izaza. Mr. Wellahan?
Yes.
And Mr. Collmar?
No.
So you have. Four, four no's and four yeses.
Four yeses. Motion fails.
Back to the original motion?
Yep.
To. It, we pass it as a second read and we would be making this. Effective on July first, if this is our second read.
Correct.
Second.
Second it? Should we do a roll call for this one as well?
No.
Right, discussion? We move the motion. Mr. Izaza.
Just wanna make sure that I realize. Properly what it is that we're voting for.
BE, school committee meeting.
Okay, I do have a question about it, or actually a point about it. Um. For convening the special meetings, we're talking about uh, getting a written request of the majority of the school committee members. I think in the future, someone may interpret that to be either the super majority. And I think it's important then to simply specify that we are talking about a simple majority. So I would. Hope that we insert simple there.
Ms. Wilson.
We follow the Robert Rules of Order, majority, it means a simple majority. That's our, our governing process.
Cue. Alright, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. That the school committee vote to approve as a second reading and adopt policy BEC executive session. May I have a motion?
Make a motion to um.
You can just say moved, so moved.
So moved, whatever.
Seconded by Ms. Tensley Williams, discussion. Mr. Willian.
Yeah, thank you, I mean, we're just adopting just the mass general laws, that's what we're doing here, that's all it is. Why is there discussion out?
Alright. All those in favor? Any opposed? So moved. That the school committee vote to approve as a second read to adopt policy BEDA, notification of school committee meetings. May I have a motion?
Moved.
Second? Seconded by Mr. Collmar, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? So moved. That the school committee vote to approve as a second read to adopt policy BEDB, agenda format. Motion. By Ms. Tensley Williams, second. Seconded by Mr. Izaza, discussion. Ms. LaFave.
So on this one, we're looking at the part at where it says that the HPS makes available a public discussion period. For persons in the audience to address the committee on specific agenda items. To my understanding, we cannot restrict people from what they are going to speak upon.
Mr. Willian.
I think Mrs. LaFave is correct on that, I just think there's been court cases that are, that have um, determined that. So um, I'm not sure whether we can. Ask people, we can ask people to. Stick to the topics on the agenda, but I don't think we can force them, but um, I don't, I don't, I don't have any, any, any of that in front of me. Maybe some more, some more research is needed on that. Thank you, um, I know we have a, the proposal is fifteen minutes for. Public comment, is everyone happy with that? Timeframe, do they, do they wanna extend that to a half an hour? I know some towns have up to an hour. So, I'm just want to just see whether the, the committee. I know we went over fifteen minutes at our last meeting, you know, um, if they do, um, if they go over. Then the chair, the chair has to ask the, the committee to extend that, so do you wanna? Stick it fifteen minutes or you wanna make it a half hour, that's my. My thought for you, you to.
That's not on this one, it's not on this.
Okay, great.
This policy, this one is the only thing that I noticed it had to do with the specific agenda items. So my recommendation is to have that removed and just. For persons in the audience to address the committee, period.
We, then we'd have to repose.
So was that an amendment to?
So that, that was. So I, I didn't know what just happened just now as a committee, I didn't hear any. Motion for an amendment.
Yeah, I did, he seconded it, it was just um. It'll be to remove. It could go for a first read with the removal of specific or the second read.
No, it'd be the first.
It would be the first then, that's fine, by removing on specific agenda items. That's all that has to be removed. Everything else can stay there.
Alright, so that was a first by Ms. LaFave, seconded by Mr. Willian. Discussion on the amendment. Mr. Collmar.
Correct me if I'm wrong. But anyone that gets up to that mic to speak. Can only speak. What is on the agenda. They, they can't speak on uh. Paving a street in Hoyok, they can't discuss uh. The city hall being, being repaired or something like this, they can only speak on. What is on the agenda.
Mr. Willian.
I think the law that I read, I don't get, I don't have it in front of me, it's under, they can top, talk about any issue under our. Under our authority, okay, so something within the school district, again, you're right, can't talk about the town hall windows. Um, the city hall windows, uh, but anything under our uh, authority.
Thank you, any more discussion on the amendment? If not, all those in favor? Any opposed? Correct. Alright.
Can we just pause for a moment, because I, I just wanna take notes, thank you.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, so that was on the amendment, so now back on the motion, all those in favor? As amended, any opposed? So moved. Next, that the school committee vote to approve as a second reading to adopt policy BEDD, Rules of Order. May I have a motion? So moved. That was Ms. Wilson, second.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Tensley Williams, discussion, Ms. LaFave.
So I do want to apologize in regards to these policies that are gonna show up where we never had a policy. And this is where the issue lied, was back on December ninth. Um, when it was put in, it was attached completely. As a whole entire packet. And that's, and I take onus for that one, okay, I take ownership for that whole entire hot mess. So. I don't know, it's just so hard because I, it's, it's not like anybody really looked at, at it, I'm sure went through and were like, oh, this is like a new one. Because nobody mentioned anything, I just noticed it now that these were never policies. So do we still wanna consider this a second read or go to the original first read?
We already.
Ms. Wilson.
We already did a first reading, whether i- it, it's our job to read our packet. And read the information that we are given and vote on what we are presented. As a school committee, we voted on what we were presented. No one had any issues with it and the first reading was passed, it was posted. And during that posting time, no one on the school committee came forward with concerns over it, so I'm saying. It, this is our second reading.
Okay, that's fine. Did somebody put in a motion?
Yes, we're in discussion right now.
So moved.
Alright, so on the motion, all those in favor? Any opposed? So moved. That the school committee vote to approve as a second reading to adopt policy BEDF, voting method. May I have a motion?
Make a motion.
That was Ms. Wilson, second. Ms. Tensley Williams, discussion.
And just to clarify, these are all to be effective July first? And that's only if they're updated on MASC?
Correct.
And that's where my announcement will be, okay. It's a second read, so should we even say to be effective July first?
I already said that earlier.
They're not gonna be effective July first, or they are?
I already said that the ones we're voting on tonight will be effective July first. But I'm not understanding.
They wouldn't be effective July first, because they have to be placed, sent to MASC and then. Put onto our website.
I understand that, but as a school committee, we are voting saying they are effective on July first, I cannot.
Okay.
We, we, we've, if I say, if we vote today. To make a policy live today. We're not going to make it effective three months from now, waiting for. Our provider to update things or three weeks from now, it's, this is the policy that we are using as a school committee. And we work um, to get whoever we're using, which is MASC, to update our policies quickly. So.
Ms. LaFave.
Do we have access to ours on our own website internally?
I'm not understand, I, I, I'm not understanding, what do you mean?
So. Does somebody have access from within our website? To change it themselves?
We have the ability to post these policies on our website. Just not on a direct link to MASC's.
That's what I'm asking.
One, but like, there's nothing preventing us from posting it on our website. We do have a section for school committee policies under review that we can post these, you know, we can post these tomorrow. If we wanted to, um, what, what takes a little longer is when we have to send them to MASC and then. And then like they post it on their website, but I don't know that that's, like, we can post a poli- we have a policy on our website.
So somebody can actually. Change it.
Not the MASC's.
I'm not asking the MASC link, but our own, from our own website.
From our own website, we have a section, uh, we've created a section on our website for uh, school committee policies under review. We can post. Any policies that already passed a second reading, we can post them in that section and say.
Okay.
These were approved. While we wait for the MASC versions to get posted on their website.
And who does that?
What do you mean, who does that?
Who does the posting part?
He, so Irene sends them to MASC. And then they have a person that we work with on their end.
I know that part.
You know, point of order, we're, the motion we're doing, we're reviewing a policy, we're not, we're not reviewing when it's going to be online.
It should.
But I, I'm just saying, we're reviewing.
It has to show up online for us, because if we're gonna start following. It has to show up online for us, because if we're gonna start following procedures and stuff for the policies, we have to know what is the current one, whether if it's an interim care, um, interim policy, whatever, just to show that we have reviewed it, because if not, then who else is gonna know that we've already reviewed this and this is the decision that we made? We have them since April 28th, that we reviewed and we re-approved and we said effective July 1st, I don't see it in here as updated. We were quick to remove, that's for sure, we removed plenty of the ones that we said to remove, but not one of the, none of the ones that we approved back on April 28th and did the second and final reading to be effective July 1st are even showing up here. So, there's my announcement.
Alright, any further discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. That the school committee vote to approve as a second reading to adopt policy BEDG, minutes. So moved by Mr. Izaza, seconded by Ms. Rob Martinez, discussion? Ms. The Fave?
This would be the one that we're talking about, the three, the three minutes? Is this one it? Or no, that's BEDH?
Yeah. Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. That the school committee vote to approve as a second reading to adopt policy BEDH, public comment at school committee meeting. Motion?
Moved.
So moved by Ms. Tensley Williams, seconded?
Second.
By Ms. Wilson, discussion, Mr. Willihan?
Thank you. Um, I just go back to my, my previous thoughts on whether we wanna keep it fifteen minutes or extend that, that's just my, uh, my question to the, the committee.
Thank you. Ms. Wilson?
I would like to, can we just focus on that? It just makes my life easier if we focus on one topic, I'm not sure if that's possible, but, um, I would like to make an amendment to the policy that we update it to thirty minutes.
Alright, seconded by Mr. Willihan? Discussion, Ms. Tensley Williams?
Um, I may be wrong, but I thought the public could speak for two minutes and then they could speak for three, they had to give permission from you, so now it's fifteen minutes.
Let me... Madam Chair?
Yes.
So, in, the bullet number one under this policy talks about at the, at every meeting, we have the opportunity for a public to speak. The, the language in this new policy speaks to the public comment time in overall cannot exceed fifteen minutes of our meeting time, so if we had twenty people standing to speak, however, whenever we give it to fifteen minutes, it's done, unless we make a motion to extend our public comment time, which then takes more time
Right.
from our meeting. So, that's why I would make the motion to move to thirty minutes.
For public comment.
Thank you, for public comment in total.
Yes, correct. Any further discussion? Alright, on the amendment, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Alright, on the motion?
I have a second amendment, number two. Sorry, this is where I called out earlier, there's an error, number two speakers...
Two minutes.
Should be allowed two minutes to present their materials, and must start, you know, by their name, but it's the, um, it's two minutes, it shouldn't be three, it should be two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, seconded by Mr. Willihan. On the amendment, to the amendment. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved.
I'm gonna say, based upon the fact that we are reducing the amount of time in this policy for a public comment, I think it should go back as a first read. Even though we had another policy speak to the two minutes, I think because we're ta- we're not adding something, we're taking away from a perception of an individual who might have read this and saying, oh, three minutes, I have plenty of time with three minutes, but two minutes is a lot shorter. You know, um, that I think it needs to go back as a first read and we post it again.
So, would the maker of the original motion rescind it? Because the original motion was to approve as a second reading.
Yes.
Sorry, Irene. I know, after all that, I know.
So, I will be making a motion.
So now you can make a new motion?
Yeah, sorry, I'll be making a motion that, um, BEDH around public comment with the language updates for number two to thirty minutes, I mean, number one to thirty minutes, number two down to two minutes, is, uh, we approve it as a first read.
Seconded by Mr. Colomore. Discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So move, motion passes unanimously.
May I, may I make a, a comment? Quick. Quick, I am, um, I just wanna let you know that as, as we are gonna be sending policies, um, forward soon, we are gonna be grouping them, um, with, you know, what type, is it a large change, a minor change, or putting that next to it, it, um, so that we're where, but I, I just have to say that I would expect, um, lengthier discussion during their first read and not our second read, I feel as though that we were not prepared as a school committee during the first reading. Um, it was, again, training wheels, which is a, a great experience for us, knowing what we need to do, um, what I need to do, moving forward to make this process better, but, um, again, it's that homework that we do between meetings, um, when I bring the policies going forward, because we can't have changes on the second read for the vast majority of these policies coming through, cuz we'll never get, move. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for your leadership on this. Moving on to announcements, oh, Ms. The Fave?
Moving forward, also, if we're gonna have big clumps like that of policies, um, I know that our packets are, what, three days, but trying to go through them, and if it's through the weekend, if we can just send the vice chair, um, if any are gonna be pulled from like a consent agenda, to pull them to the side, um, so that way we can at least get rid of the bulk of them and the ones that we need to have discussion on, um, we can then break it down. You know...
Ms. Wilson?
I'm not understanding, because I can't tell what we're gonna have discussions about, so I, I'm just, maybe I didn't understand you, Ms. The Fave, I'm so sorry.
When we are reviewing our packets at home?
Yes.
And say that I turn around and be like, you know what, I have a question on BEDB, so I'll send her an email and say, please pull BEDB to the side, because I'm gonna have a discussion, so, and this way we can start with consent agendas where things are gonna pass because there are no concerns? Um, but then...
That would be, that would be kind of like what we already do in terms of, can we take this as a package? But if I already know ahead of time that there are questions, some particular ones, I can be like, oh, we can do as a package except this, this and that. Makes sense?
I understand now, thank you.
Sort of like delegate assembly?
I understand now, thank you.
Thank you so much, announcements, June 27th, Family Fun Day, I'm Morgan, please do go, I'm gonna be there.
Can I, can I say something before the announcements, I'm sorry?
That, that was what already happened, there was only one.
Okay, I just wanna say, um, um, thank you, thanks to Ellie who has shared this, um, policy, and I've been sitting on it, and this has been sweat and tears, and I, you know, it's been hard for, and I've learned a lot, even though I was on a school committee before, but the changes, I guess I have not seen it within those ten years, so thank you for the work you put into this, cuz there's been a lot of work.
Thank you so much for your leadership, and thank you so much, the more you do your homework, the faster these meetings go, thank you, everybody, motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
No.
Oh, no, Mr. Colomore?
I have an announcement to make.
Oh, go ahead.
That, uh, I won't be running for the school committee anymore. I think I've put in a great deal of time here.
Yes, you have.
Yes, you have.
I love it. But I wish all of you the best in anything you do here, and tonight was a success with the passing of going into, out of recessionalship and working with the state and working with you fine, ladies and gentlemen. I just felt as though I need a rest and I just won't take out any papers this year.
Thank you so much, Mr. Colomore, Ms. The Fave?
I just wanna say, Mr. Colomore, that I was so happy when I saw you here today. We've missed you these past meetings, but I think it was very important for you to be here today because the end goal was for you to be here when we get our schools back. And I am so happy that you were able to hear those words tonight.
Yes.
That you are still serving on the committee, but it'll be under local control.
Yes.
Do you want me to keep coming to meetings?
You have to, you have to, you gotta come to the July, you have to come all the way till the end of December.
Come the rest of the year.
Yes. Thank you so much, and I will say, let's give a round of applause for Mr. Colomore.
And he's always welcome at the convention, cuz he's a life member.
Yes, that's right, alright, thank you so much, Ms. Tensley Williams?
To Mr. Colomore, um, we love you very much, we will miss you, okay, and you have our telephone number, so give us a call, okay, if you don't, we'll call you.
Thank you so much, motion to adjourn? Seconded, all those in favor? Aye, thank you, everybody, see you next time.